Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call in to open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on August 3rd, 2017, beginning at 7:04 PM. Thank you for being with us. We have a full house. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Sullins in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And also, if you would, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Okay. So, first on our agenda, we have the ratification of administrative appointments. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to recommend the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for the following positions: Executive Director of Transformational Learning, Principal for Venture High School, Principal for Miller Elementary, Principal for Patrick Elementary, Principal for Sherrod Elementary, Assistant Principal for Amos Elementary, Assistant Principal for Johns', Assistant Principal for Moore Elementary, Assistant Principal for Piercey Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Short Elementary, as discussed in closed session.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that? No, just kidding.[134.16][134.16](Laughter). Do we have a motion to approve the ratification of administrative appointments?
Move to approve.[141.19][141.19](Laughter). Second. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullins, second by Mrs. Walton, to approve any discussion. Trustees, please vote. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative. Mr. Hogg and Mr. Hibbs are away on other business this evening. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to introduce our new Executive Director for Transformational Learning, Dr. Tamela Horton.[174.62][174.62](Applause). Tamela attended the University of Texas in Tyler to obtain her Bachelor of Science in Mathematics, UT Tyler for Master of Education in Ed Administration, UT Arlington for a PhD in Case 16 Educational Leadership. Most recently, has been our Senior Director for Transformational Learning, has been an Executive Director of Special Programs of School Improvement, and a Principal in Lancaster, has been a Principal in Dallas, has been an Assistant Principal in Duncanville, has been a math teacher in Longview, and a math teacher in Tatum ISD. Tamela, congratulations.
Thank you. Board President, Mr. Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, I thank you for this opportunity to serve as Executive Director of Transformational Learning. These last two years in Arlington ISD have been an amazing journey. I have loved being here. I've loved serving. I've loved meeting the needs of the community, and I'm just so excited and grateful to have this opportunity to continue to serve and contribute to the work of preparing students to graduate exceptionally prepared for college career and citizenship. So, I thank you again. I have family who are on their way. I don't think they are here, so I don't get to recognize my family, so I'm gonna say thank you, thank you, thank you.[256.62][256.62](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Principal for Venture High School, Mr. Greg Meeks.[265.62][265.62](Applause). Mr. Meeks attended Henderson State University to receive his Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, UNT Dallas for Master of Education in Ed Administration, most recently, an Assistant Principal at Arlington High School, has served as an Assistant Principal at Carter Junior High, has been an avid coordinator and an ELA 7th and 8th Grade Teacher, and a Texas History Teacher. Greg, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board, as well as the Superintendent Cabinet, I thank you for this opportunity, your faith that you have in me. I had a 10-minute speech, but then they told me it was a 1 instead of a 10, so I will expedite it. Truly, this is a dream and a goal that I've had for many years, and so I appreciate the confidence you have in me. My goal is to make the dreams of our students at Venture become a reality, as well as we connect to the 100% students of the strategic plan we'll graduate, as we connect to the six traditional high schools, as well as the CTE Center. I look forward to some great things that we're gonna do for our students. I would be remiss if I didn't introduce my family, my wife Bridgette, as well as my three boys. Micah is eight, Tristan is six, and River is nine months. Of course, my parents, they've always been great and supportive, my mom and brother in Louisiana, as well as my sisters, and my sisters in Houston and their families. Real quick, mentors that I've had over the years, Ms. Stevens gave me an opportunity at Carter, not sure why, but she did. And then, from there, I worked with Ms. Acosta as we did our jobs, and then Mr. Nix came and polished my skills, and then I was blessed to collaborate with Mr. Lizardo. From there, Mr. Dalla gave me a chance to get the high school experience, and from there, Ms. Wilmuth, and Ms. Hollinger, as well as all of you, gave me this opportunity. So, thank you, and I look forward for the great things at Venture.[382.81][382.81](Applause).
Next, our Principal for Miller Elementary, Ms. Shelley Austin.[391.12][391.12](Applause). Shelley attended UT Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Criminology and Criminal Justice, UT Arlington for a Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction, most recently, an Assistant Principal in Grand Prairie ISD, and has been a district instructional coach, has also taught 3rd, 4th, and 5th Grade at Butler and at Spear Elementary here in Arlington. Shelley, congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you, President Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm honored and excited to join the Miller family as the new principal. I'm able to stand here in front of you today because of the community of people who have supported and encouraged and guided me. These people include my husband Jeremy Austin, my two sons Nicholas and Brady, and my best friend Amy Watkins, way back there, because they've been my supporter and cheerleader for the last 12 years in this journey of education. It all started with a amazing Principal, Linda Daley, on at Spear Elementary, who took a chance on a young, excited first-year teacher that really wanted to teach in her hometown. Then Sarah Coulter, who came tonight, from Butler Elementary, challenged me, provided me opportunities to learn from my experiences and make me a better leader, and also my Principal Daniel Gallagher from Butler for pushing me to get out of my comfort zone and follow my passion for curriculum and instruction. The Grand Prairie family, who gave me invaluable experiences and opportunities to guide and lead others throughout their district. And finally, I'd like to give a huge thank to Dr. Christy Buell and you all for welcoming me back home to AISD to serve my community again. It is my vision to motivate, inspire, and propel every member of the Miller School family into a place of continual excellence. Miller Elementary is bursting with great potential to far exceed expectations, and to produce learners and leaders who refuse to be average, overcoming obstacles and blazing trails that make great impacts. No longer will Miller Elementary be the best-kept secret in AISD. Thank you.[504.30][504.30](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Principal for Patrick Elementary, Ms. Ina Myers.[515.01][515.01](Applause). Ina attended Southwestern Assemblies of God University for a Bachelor of Science in Ministry and School Counseling, Dallas Baptist University for a Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, has been a Principal in Dallas ISD and the Life School, has taught 7th Grade Writing and Social Studies, 5th Grade and an Assistant Principal, and a Special Programs Director. Ina, congratulations, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. President Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for entrusting me to be a part of the great community of Arlington ISD. To quote Oliver Wendell Holmes, "A man's or woman's mind stretched by new ideas may never return to its original dimensions." I've been blessed to have many great mentors and leaders in my life who have stretched my mind and challenged my thinking and pushed me to be better. Thank you to my amazing parents and to my four brothers. I'm proud to be a Myers. Thank you to my first and forever mentor, Mr. Joseph Mena, and my former Superintendent, Mr. Miles. They have all challenged my thinking and taught me so much, all of which are not here tonight. So, a huge thank you to those who are here, Dr. Buell and Tracy Brown, to the interview committee and the cabinet, thank you for trusting me to lead this great work. Thank you to my friends and family, who have challenged me and inspired me and motivated me daily, you guys know who you are, and to my wonderful Patrick family, in the short time that I've been here, you've welcomed me, you've inspired me, and you've trusted me, and you've captured my heart already. Thank you to our living legacy, Ms. Diane Patrick, we appreciate the time, heart, and energy that you give our community. I'm excited about the years ahead, and I'm excited to be a patriot, and if we do our job, we will continue to stretch the thinking of our students and challenge them to be better. Thank you.[621.66][621.66](Applause).
Next, our Principal for Sherrod Elementary, Ms. Shundra Brown.[630.04][630.04](Applause). Shundra attended Texas Women's University for Bachelor of Arts in English and Sociology, Texas Women's University for Master of Arts, most recently, a Principal in Dallas ISD, has also served as a 10th Grade Teacher at Cedar Hill, a 9th Grade Teacher at Cedar Hill as well, and an 11th Grade Teacher at DeSoto High School. Shundra, congratulations, and welcome.
Thank you. President Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for this opportunity. I told the interview committee a little bit about my story, and I want to thank you for believing that we could work together to do something wonderful at Sherrod Elementary, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'd like to thank God for this opportunity. From God, all of our blessings flow. I'd like to thank our Sherrod family that's in the house. They have been wonderful over these past couple of weeks. They've been there, working really hard. I'd like to thank Dr. Christy Buell, Ms. A. Tracy Brown, I'd like to thank Michelle, the entire school leadership cabinet has been wonderful about working with us to get things taken care of. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to thank my family. My little six-year-old Malcolm Brown is watching from home, so thank you, family, friends, and fellow principals for all of your support. Thank you.[719.82][719.82](Applause).
Next, our Assistant Principal for Amos Elementary, Ms. Adrian Malone.[728.75][728.75](Applause). Ms. Malone attended Texas Tech University in Lubbock to obtain her Bachelor of Science in Human Development and Family Studies, Texas A&amp;M Commerce for a Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently, a 2nd Grade Teacher in Mesquite ISD, has also served as an Assistant Principal, Principal Fellow, an instructional supervisor, a reading instructional coach, and a 6th Grade Master Reading Teacher. Ms. Malone, welcome.
Thank you. Greetings, Board President Erin Rice, Superintendent Cavassos, and the Board of Trustees. I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve the students of Arlington ISD. To Mrs. Laird and the Amos staff, it is with great pride that I look forward to inspiring our students to reach their full potential. To my family, near and far in the Panhandle, thank you for your encouragement and support along the way, and to my sister who has to put up with me on a daily basis, thank you, thank you, thank you. To my former students and leaders, thank you for allowing me to have a variety of experiences. Further, I believe every student is unique and capable of learning and succeeding, so as I take my position and become an Amos Eagle, let us soar like never before. Thank you.[813.54][813.54](Applause).
Next, the Assistant Principal for Johns' Elementary, Ms. Grecia Lopez.[822.62][822.62](Cheering). Grecia attended University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Bilingual Education, University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction, most recently, a campus testing facilitator at Patrick Elementary, a 3rd Grade Bilingual Teacher at Webb, a 5th Grade ESL Teacher at Webb as well. Grecia, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'd like to thank all of you, and Tracy Brown, and my new Principal, Vanessa Colon, for this opportunity and really privileged, it's a privilege to serve as Assistant Principal at Johns' Elementary. I assure all of you that I will work relentlessly, day in and day out, to ensure and to help make sure that our students are 100% successful, every single one of them. And I know that we are restricted to time here. I cannot possibly name everybody that I would like to name, but there are a few people that I just have to publicly acknowledge and thank, and you heard some of them already. So, I'd like to start with acknowledging my family. Thank you guys so much for being here. I have family that couldn't be here. Very special thank you to my brother and sister, who always told me, "Just do it. We'll figure it out later. Do it, Grecia." So, thank y'all for that. I appreciate that. Thank you to my families at Webb Elementary and Patrick. I'd like to thank that I'm not losing families, I'm just extending the family. A very, very special thank you to my former principals. Thank you for believing in me, cultivating me. And a very, very special thank you to the leadership team at Patrick. I love you guys. You will forever be my mentors. Thank you. I'd like to thank Peggy Perufield and her entire team. Although I'm in a new role, I will probably still call them multiple times a day, like I did before. To my 3rd Grade Teacher, Mr. Martin, my love of learning really ignited in his classroom as a 3rd Grader, and I am forever grateful for that, and I thank him for that. To the chip to my guacamole, Michael, thank you for encouraging me.[942.56][942.56](Laughter). And I'd like to, pardon me, I'm gonna just turn my back one sec. Mom and Dad, if y'all could stand up for a sec?[951.12][951.12](Applause). Dad, Dad, don't sit down.[958.00][958.00](Laughter). Dad, thank you for teaching me that success is really perpetual motion. You taught me to never stop and keep going, and that's driven me, whether or not you've known that, it's driven me, so thank you. Mami, gracias por enseñarme que querer, que... I'm sorry. Gracias por enseñarme que querer es poder, y con esfuerzo puedo lograr lo que yo quiera. Muchas gracias, mami. Te quiero mucho.[983.04][983.04](Applause). And finally, I'd like to thank my former students for helping me become the educator and leader that I am today, and to my future students at Johns' Elementary. I cannot wait to meet them. I cannot wait to meet y'all. We're gonna continue to grow and learn together. Go Jaguars! Thank you.[1004.73][1004.73](Applause).
Next, the Assistant Principal for Marymore Elementary, Mr. Michael Zook.[1014.00][1014.00](Cheering). Michael attended Stephen F. Austin to receive his Bachelor of Arts in Communications, UNT for his Master of Ed in Autism Intervention. Most recently, a campus instructional coach at Sam Houston High School, has served as a campus instructional coach at Morton Elementary, Special Ed Teacher at Morton Elementary, has also taught ESL, has been a resource ELA Teacher, and a self-contained Teacher as well. Michael, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the Board, it's a privilege to be granted this great opportunity to serve as the Assistant Principal of Marymore. I want to thank my wife Lindley, and our two children, and all of our family for their loving support. Their continued encouragement has driven me to grow at every turn. To my previous Arlington ISD families, Blanton, Morton, and Sam, your work and dedication has made me a better educator. AISD's coaching program and its leaders have provided me with an increased depth in my interpersonal resources and skills. Ms. McDonald and the leadership at Morton have given me the opportunity to grow in my leadership abilities. Most recently, at Sam, Mr. Benavides, Ms. McLendon, and the Sam leadership team, I want to thank you all, if anybody's here, for your mentorship, guidance, and perspective. I'm excited to grow with Dr. Buell, Mr. Jones, and my new Marymore family. Thank you all for coming.[1099.23][1099.23](Cheering). I look forward to serving the students and staff of such a wonderful school. Our team will continue to build gritty, intrinsically motivated, forward-thinking staff and students. Let's continue this noble work together. Thank you.[1113.51][1113.51](Applause).
Next, our Assistant Principal for Piercey Elementary, Ms. Elizabeth Leach.[1123.01][1123.01](Cheering). Elizabeth attended UT Arlington for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for a Master of Arts in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies, most recently, a teacher support interventionist at Piercey Elementary, has been a testing facilitator at Webb, a 1st Grade Teacher at Webb, kindergarten and 1st Grade District-wide exemplar teacher at Uplift Education, and has taught 5th and 6th Grade at Webb as well. Elizabeth, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. President Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you very much for your votes of confidence. I appreciate that more than you know. And yes, I do have a few people I'd like to thank.
My husband Chris, my mom and dad. I'm always the crier, so I'm sorry.[1169.23][1169.23](Laughter). Sorry. And my sisters. Get it together.[1177.15][1177.15](Laughter).
You can do it.
I'd also like to thank my colleagues and leaders, past and present, every single one of them has taught me so much about myself, my craft, and has helped shape me into the leader that I am today. Specifically, Nicole Turnipseed for taking a chance on me.[1195.01][1195.01](Sobbing). And bringing me to Piercey, and imparting her wisdom on me. Next, thank you to Carol McCorkle for encouraging me to be brave and take the next steps in my career. These two individuals are extremely special people that made a very large impact in my journey to today. I am also a product of AISD schools, specifically Atherton Elementary, Hutchison Junior High, and Arlington High, oh, two. I would also like to take this opportunity to encourage the kids of East Arlington, myself being one of them, to stay in school and graduate, get the loan, enroll in the class, earn the certificate or the degree, because education is one of the only things that no one can ever take away from you. Lastly, I'd like to use this opportunity to have you consider this moment as your open invitation to Piercey Elementary. If you think I'm stable enough, that is, clearly.[1251.58][1251.58](Laughter). I don't think so. We are an innovative, risk-taking campus that prides itself on meeting our goals and working together, and we are ready for more, so please make the trek way down to South Arlington and come see us. Thank you very much for this opportunity.[1267.33][1267.33](Cheering).
Last but not least, we have the Assistant Principal for Short Elementary, Ms. Ronisha Ewens.[1282.23][1282.23](Cheering). Ronisha attended Jackson State University for Bachelor of Science in Industrial Technology, Walden University for a Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently, an Assistant Principal at Ellis Elementary, has been a campus instructional coach in Fort Worth ISD, and a 7th and 8th Grade Teacher in Everman ISD. Ronisha, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, and the Cabinet, thank you so much for trusting me to be the Assistant Principal at Short Elementary. I look forward to working with the new staff, the students, the parents, and the leadership team. I'd like to introduce my family. I have my husband, Michael, my handsome husband, Michael, right here. I have my mom, she's over there, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity again, because when I was presented last year, she could not make it because she was recovering from surgery, and so I'm so glad and I'm so grateful that I have this opportunity again. She came in from Mississippi. She drove all the way down here for this, so thank you.[1351.11][1351.11](Applause). I have my daughter, Ashley, she's five. I have a 10-year-old, Rihanna, and I have a 20-year-old that's in college at Texas I have my beautiful sister, Katrina. She's actually going to be a teacher at Nichols Junior High this year. She's a first-year teacher, so welcome her education.[1375.11][1375.11](Applause). And my handsome nephew, Jalen, beside her, so thank you, guys. What else? What else? What else? I'm not the crier, I'm sorry. I like to definitely...[1388.01][1388.01](Laughter). Well, you know what? I am sometimes, but I'm a little nervous, and I'm normally not, so I don't think I could get a tear out if I really tried right now, because I'm so nervous. Okay, I'd like to thank God for what he does for me on a daily basis. I'd like to thank Dr. Buell, I saw her in here, for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to thank my Principal, Mr. Tracy Cross back there, for agreeing to work with me every single day, day in and day out. Thank you. I had a very successful year last year at Ellis Elementary. I'd like to thank Keith Boyd for taking a chance on me. I don't know if he's here or not, but thank him for that, and being the steadfast leader and just showing me the way. My Assistant Principal last year also, that worked alongside me, Mr. Hunter, thank you. I have Leslie Rhodes here from Adams Elementary. Thank you so much for your support, Leslie, I appreciate it. The Ellis family, thank you. My Short family is here. I've seen some of the people. Thank you so much. And I'd just like to take this time to thank anyone who's ever taken the time out to encourage me and just listen to what I have to say. I appreciate it. And with this wonderful blessing of becoming an Assistant Principal at Short, I keep this quote in mind, "As I get to know and work and grow with our teachers." This quote is by Sidney Hook. It says, "Everyone who remembers his own education remembers teachers, not the methods or the techniques. The teacher is the heart of the education system." So, with that, I look forward to working with the heart of the education system as we ensure that our students are at the center of that. Thank you.[1489.11][1489.11](Cheering).
All I can say is, wow. We have amazing talent in this district. Welcome in your current capacities, great, great leadership abilities. Look very forward to getting to interact with you, and as school is upon us in just a few short weeks, be ready. I know this is a ratification, for the most part, so you've already been at work, and keep rolling up those sleeves, because it's only going to get more fast and furious from here, right? So, and such a wonderful thing, with all the support, the friends and the family, and I love the competing school spirits, always love that.[1541.83][1541.83](Laughter). No winners, everybody's a winner here, okay? No single. As is our custom, we ask that the appointees follow Mr. Cale to our lobby for a receiving line, so each of us can meet you. I ask that if you could please allow the Board to go first, so that we can participate in this, and we will take a brief break, and then we can get back to business.
I now call this meeting back to order. Let's see, we do not have a public hearing, so we'll move on. Moving to the open forum for agenda items, I don't see any cards, Ms. Benjamin, is that correct? All right, so we will continue on. Next on the agenda are our action items. The very first one is Consider Designation of Official Delegates to the Tasby 2017 Delegate Assembly. Dr. Cavassos, anything?
You've previously received this information, and we need to appoint delegates from the Board.
Very good. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I would like to nominate two of our fellow Board members to these positions. I would like to nominate, I move that Keisha Mays be our delegate, and Kristin Hudson be our alternate delegate to Tasby.
Very good.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mrs. Sullins, to appoint, essentially reappoint, Ms. Keisha Mays in the position of delegate, and Ms. Kristin Hudson in the alternate delegate position. Thank you for serving in that capacity last year, and again, for continuing to do so moving forward. It's a great representation to the district. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no lights, please vote. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much, both of you. Next, we have the consideration to the termination of a construction manager at Risk Contract for the 2014 Bond Construction Project Phase III Bid Package 5. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening, we bring for your consideration, Board's consideration, the termination of a construction contract, and we will be explaining some of that detail as to the rationale behind that for your consideration. Ms. Powell?
President Rice.
President Reich, Board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. Yes, we have a, an item for your consideration this evening that would terminate a construction contract, and I want to be very clear with all of you all and the public that the construction manager on this project is POG. POG does a significant amount of work for us. They're working on a number of our projects right now. We think very highly of them, they do very good work. Our request to terminate this particular project or contract is being brought strictly as a means to attempt to gain some better pricing, go back out to the market with a different procurement method, rather than a construction manager at risk method. We think we might gain some better value by bidding this as a competitive sealed proposal project. And so, we'll be going back out for this fall. We have visited with folks from POG already about this, they're very understanding. They've worked with us for quite some time to try to pare the pricing down on, on this particular project to get it into budget. We were not able to get there, but we have told them that it certainly would be our desire that if they find this in their capacity to bid, that we would like for them to bid again on this. So, this is an attempt to gain better value. There's also an item on the consent agenda somewhat related to this that would name a new method of procurement for this particular package, and that would be a competitive sealed proposal, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Powell. Any trustees with questions? If not, I'm, this is an action item, so I'd be willing to entertain a motion, please. Ms. Hudson?
Move to approve.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Ms. Hudson, a second by Ms. Mays. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Moving on, next is the items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items that trustees wish to be withdrawn and considered separately? None, seeing none? Okay, so we will be considering the items listed on the agenda under consent. Ms. Powell, could you please share any bids with us?
President Reich, Board members, Dr. Cavassos, there are two bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. In both cases, the administration is recommending the low bids, the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations this evening totaling $60,238. This is our first report of the new fiscal year, so our year-to-date total is the same, $60,238.
Very good, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Sullins, second by Ms. Walton, to approve the consent agenda as it stands. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative, we have consent passed. That's right, Ms. Walton. Okay, we will now move on to our discussion items tonight. The first one, number, or letter A, is a 2014 Bond Program update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Reich, and this evening we'd like to give the Board an update on our bond projects, and there are many bond projects going on right now, and a lot of construction and renovation as part of our school district as we implement our bond. So, Ms. Powell will give us a presentation and an overview of the status of the projects and the advances we've made in our bond. Ms. Powell?
Thank you. President Reich, Board members, Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Cavassos mentioned we have a significant amount of work going on this summer, as you'll see in just a moment, but we do want to update you on the overall progress of the bond package. Chad Branham will be joining me in a couple of minutes when we get to the technology portion of the bond program. So, we all know that our current bond program totals $663 million and covers work in the areas of facilities, fine arts, safety, security, and technology, and also transportation. So, to date, we have, what you're going to see this evening are reports on projects Phases 1 through 3, and an update on the work in Phase 4 at the moment, and Phase 5. Phases 1 through 3 actually represent over 80% of all of the dollars in the bond program, so this thing is pretty much front-loaded. And so, we are in the heart of the bond program at the moment, carrying out these projects. So, to date, we have almost $393 million of the Phase 1 through 3 dollars either encumbered or already expended. And so, then we have left $144 million. And then, when you net out the bond issuance cost and the interest proceeds and donations we've received, we have a total of $148 million of the funds that were budgeted in Phases 1 through 3 left available to us. And those are projects that are getting underway, and you'll begin to see those show up on future reports. Also, beginning on the next report, you'll start seeing budgeted dollars and financial information on Phase 4 projects, okay? So, if you look at it in terms of percentages, over 73% of all of the dollars allocated to Phase, Phase 1 through Phase 3 projects have either been spent or encumbered as of the end of June. And that work certainly continues. We'll go through this by the different categories of work in the bond program. So, the first one being facilities. To date, we have over 70% of the total dollars either spent or encumbered of these funds. And at the moment, we have exactly 100 projects underway in some phase of work, and that is phenomenal, and I have to commend Kelly Horn, Javier Fernandez, and their staff for the way they've managed this work this summer. We have 45 of these projects are currently in design phase with architects. 32 of them are under construction right now, and then 23 are in the closeout stages. Looking at the Phase 1 projects, everything is complete and is now in those, in that closeout stage. The two that are still under construction are Bowles and the Career Tech Center, and both of those are moving along very well, and we'll see some pictures of them in just a moment. We have several pictures here from the diaper to Career Tech Center, and this is the front entrance to the building. The building will be ready, we'll have kids in this building, first day of school, August 21st. In addition to the facilities work taking place here, there's been a tremendous amount of planning with the principal and Assistant Principal and their staff. They have teachers that will report to duty next week, and will begin working at the Career Tech Center, begin collaborating with each other, and begin their planning and preparation for the start of the school year. The picture on the left is Chad's world, that's down at the data center, down on the far west end of the building. The photograph of the right is on the north side of the, of the facility. This is, will be the student entrance, there will be a canopy there. The rain we've had kind of sporadically in the last couple of weeks has delayed us in pouring some concrete out back and finishing up that canopy, but that is coming. This is a picture down the main corridor, and we have the boxes you see stacked in the middle of the hall, these are materials that are being used, finished-type materials, flooring and different things that we're thrilled are here, because if they're on-site, then, you know, they're, they're ready to go. We've been moving things from the classrooms out into the hallways and getting those learning spaces ready, and really starting in earnest on Monday, we have a significant amount of furniture and equipment that will be delivered to the site, and so we have staging areas set for those. We have been working very closely with the city, the city fire marshal, and the building inspectors on the progress of this build, of this construction project. They have been wonderful to work with us and are helping us gain access to the building one area at a time. This building is divided into several different areas, and so, we're starting on the far west end, again, down in the data warehouse area and the network operating center where Chad's guys are, and in moving east. And so, what you see here is a progression, this is about the middle of the building, and as we work, you'll see more items coming into this main hallway, so that we can keep the classroom spaces clear. We have some big learning areas where we are staging equipment that will be installed over the next two weeks. This is Bowles Junior High, it likewise is moving along quite well. We have an addition here, we created some new, new special ed suite inside the main part of the building, replaced the classrooms lost to those new spaces with brand-new classrooms in an addition. So, that is about ready to go, as you see. Phase 2 projects, the vast majority of these are under construction at the moment, as you see here. We have several that are being bid this fall, and one that is still in the design phase. This is largely where a lot of our work has centered this summer. We've got some pictures of these projects. This is a photograph, and we've got several here, of the Ag Science Center. The Ag Science Center will open in October. When school starts, these kids will actually go to the Career Tech Center and take classes there until the Ag Science Center is finished in October. Most of them, the, the kids who have heifers, most of those kids have already purchased their heifer, and they are already housed at some private locations, and when the facility is ready, they'll bring those animals over. Others of the animals, the goats and the sheep and the, the smaller rabbits, rabbits generally can be kept at students' homes, and most of them do that. The goats and the sheep, according to Ginger Polster, who's the principal, both the Career Tech Center and the Ag Science Center, those animals are typically purchased a, a little later into the fall, into October anyway, so the facility will be ready when it's time for those kids to, to purchase those animals. This is an aerial view of the Ag Science Center, this is straight down 303 from us. This is Sam Houston High School. The wall that you see closest to us, the red wall, is the far south wall of the new cafeteria and kitchen. That space will be ready in October. Until then, we'll continue to use the existing cafeteria and kitchen to serve students. The large wall you see north of that with windows in it, that's the south wall of the student addition, the classroom addition for the 9th Grade Center, and that's on track for us to have ready to go on the 21st. And also, there's administrative offices that will support that area, and they likewise will be ready to go when school starts. This is a closer image of the classroom addition at Sam Houston. This is Crowe Elementary. Crowe, we have in the bond program, two new STEM labs and a strings room for every elementary school in the district. And several schools, we actually had to construct a new addition in order to provide those spaces to the schools. Crowe is one that needed an addition, very small school, very small campus. We needed an addition there to accommodate their STEM labs and their strings room. And so, this particular project will continue on after school starts, and I believe it is scheduled to be ready in the winter months, probably slightly, just slightly after winter break. These are images kind of in three different stages of STEM labs. The one on the left, Bergen, is obviously complete. You can see that Thornton is more in the early-stage demo and starting to strip out existing spaces to renovate. And Ditto on the bottom is a little further along, kind of midway in their construction process. This is Little Elementary, I believe they already were using this maybe close to the end of the school year, but it certainly is going to be ready when, when school begins. Williams Elementary, these are in Miller and Hale, these are pictures of strings rooms, and they're, again, you see them in different states, kind of a finished state at Miller, and likewise at Hale, and more of the construction phase there at Williams. This is mechanical, these are examples of mechanical renovations, and it's hard to take a really exciting picture of air conditioning equipment, but we have several here, three different schools, and all of these are either ready or about to be ready. And then roof work, likewise, you know, roofing doesn't make for real exciting pictures, but I can assure you that a good roof system is very important to our learning environment, as is the HVAC system that we've just looked at. And so, again, three different schools, Martin, Nichols, and Duff. The work at Martin has been ongoing throughout the spring and through the summer, and that will continue on a little bit into the, the start of the fall semester. That is a very large facility, so there's a lot of roof to, to cover there. The Nichols Junior High roof, I believe, is about complete, and then likewise, you see roof that, work that has begun at Duff Elementary. These are pictures of various renovation projects at different schools, or actually, this is all Martin, but different spaces at Martin. The top left is actually their auditorium. We've stripped everything out of the auditorium, and so, work will be taking place there throughout the fall semester and into the early part of 2018, replacing seats and flooring in that space. On the bottom left, we have duck work, mechanical work taking place, and I think the other two pictures as well relate to duck work and mechanical work at Martin. I, I will say that a special thanks should go out to all of the principals, as they've had work done on their campuses. They're wonderful to work with. We make a mess when we come, and we're there for a while, and it's usually kind of loud and, and sometimes a little bit disruptive. Principals do a masterful job of creating swing spaces inside their buildings, so students can, can move to rooms that are a little bit outside the construction area, especially when we're doing roofing. We don't ever do roof work over an occupied space, and so, we have to make sure that we coordinate very closely between the contractor and the principal to, to move kids as the work goes on. So, principals are, have just been fantastic to work with, and we appreciate that very much. Other pictures, other examples of renovation projects, again, a variety of schools here. You can see everything from interior renovations to create new music storage space at Martin, where they were really strapped in terms of space needs, to just ADA ramps in front of Sherid. Ditto, they renovated art room, all the way to Ellis with new gym floor. Miller, you see their new drive here, and then Knox, this is a picture of their renovation work in their new admin area. All of these are moving along, and will be ready for the start of school, and it makes us always nervous this time of year, but as Mr. Horn shared with me a little while ago, he and his team had a, a showstopper meeting earlier today, as he calls them, to determine if there was anything that would cause us a problem when school does start. And we, we know that at Sherid, we have a front drive that won't be ready, and so, we're already working with the principal on that to make sure we have alternate drop-off sites and, and plans there, but that's the only thing that, that we're aware of that is going to not be quite ready for us to accept students on the first day of school. Phase 3 projects, most of these are, we've completed the design work, and they are in the bid stage at the moment. We have several that where construction has started even just this summer, and we have several that are still in design. A big one that we'll talk about in just a minute there is Fine Arts Center. Phase 4 projects, you may recall that in June, we announced, we brought to the Board a recommendation for architects for Phase 4 projects, and so, the architects have been meeting with us and with principals, and they're beginning the design phase on these projects. The construction on these projects will begin late next spring and into next summer. We spent a tremendous amount of time this summer working on the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex, the design of those two facilities. As you well know, we purchased a piece of property immediately south of AT&amp;T Stadium, off of Division Street, and we are putting both of these facilities on that site, on the far west end of that particular property. HKS Architects is designing both facilities. We've met with them numerous times, we have a bi-weekly meeting. At the very longest, it's a bi-weekly meeting, and we've had much more frequent meetings in, as we've moved through some of this work. We've made site visits to other facilities in other districts that have facilities similar to what we're creating. to what we're creating to see how these things are actually utilized and what, what the users like and don't like about the facilities. And we come back and we use that information to help inform art design. We've also been meeting with board subcommittees, one for the Athletics Complex and one for Fine Arts Center, to share the progress and work with those committees. We've also held charrettes for both of these projects with users. In the case of Athletics, it's been with coaches and trainers. In the case of Fine Arts Center, we've had directors from all of the different fine arts disciplines, whether it's visual arts or performing arts, and they've all spoken and shared information about the kinds of spaces they need, the size of those spaces, and the, the kind of arrangements inside those spaces. And all of that has informed the work that we've done to this point. We plan to bring to the board in September schematic design on the Fine Arts Center and then probably in October schematic design on the Athletics Complex. Before we even get to the schematic design on the Athletics Complex, we'll be coming to the board, very similar to what we did with the Fine Arts Center, and talking about the programming, the kinds of spaces that we need in, in that particular facility and in cost estimates. This I just show is the visual. This is a, a map of the dates for both projects. The red project is the Fine Arts Center, the blue is the Athletics Complex. They will move along. The Fine Arts Center design work began first, began in March. The Athletics Complex work really began in earnest this summer. It will not take as long to design the Athletics Complex as it does the Fine Arts Center. The building itself is just not quite as complex. And so we'll reach a point where these two really marry up and the intention is to bid them as a single package next spring. We anticipate that we will have these construction documents ready to go out for bid in April and then we will be bringing back to the board in June a recommendation to work contract for these projects. The construction work will take about 23 months and the buildings will be complete in late spring of 2020 and that'll give us the summer period to move in, learn how to use the equipment in these facilities and then open the facilities in early fall of 2020. Phase five projects, we have issued an RFQ for design work, architectural design work on these projects. So these are the last of the projects in the bond program and so we anticipate that we'll be bringing this back, probably first meeting in October for a recommendation to the board for architect services. You can see a lot of the work here is related to administrative offices, the Service Center, Transportation. We specifically left those until the latter part of the bond program. We do have some schools in here as well. Hub participation, we have, based on the contracts that have been executed to this point, we have commitments of 24% hub participation from the contractors and the architects. What we've actually realized through the July report is 18% on the reports. And so that work, some of these projects are just getting started and so we kind of see this ebb and flow as we move through the projects. In terms of fine arts, most of the work recently here has been to purchase new instruments. You can see that they've actually spent or actually have encumbered about 96% of all the dollars available to them in phases one through three. They try to place their orders for equipment in the late spring so that they're delivered during the summer and the equipment's here when school starts in the fall. So that, that has taken place and they are receiving equipment now. They, the fine arts folks have spent a tremendous amount of time this summer on the design work for the Fine Arts Center and then also planning work for the Fine Arts Dual Language Academies to welcome a new cohort of students there. We'll have our first second grade class at the two academies this fall. That brings us to Safety, Security, and Technology and Mr. Branham is going to share some information about this area.
Good evening.
Dr. Raish, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Just a brief update regarding the technology bond program. I'm going to highlight a few pieces of that. You'll notice over the course of our five-year program, we've budgeted roughly $82 million towards our technology program. Expendited date, roughly $44 million. We encumbered $4.7 million and just over $262,000 available. Obviously, we have our new allotment that's just come available, so we're going to kick in new projects as we go into the new fiscal year. Just to highlight some of the pictures, some of the really cool stuff that is existing over at our new technology data center, it's really exciting, but you'll notice on the left-hand side, we have some of our new office spaces. There where the chairs are, is more of our collaborative spaces. If you've, hopefully you've all had the opportunity to go over there, but if you haven't, we kind of have collaborative open spaces amongst the main portion of our upfront space, up and down the front of the data center. And then we have more of your traditional offices along the backside. And then in the right-hand side, you'll notice we have, for me, it's really exciting, maybe to you it's not, but a lot of our equipment in the upper right-hand corner is what will allow us to really grow and scale as a district as we offer technology services across the district. This really clearly will set a great foundation for us that we've never had in Arlington. So really excited to share more about that as, as we continue to move forward. And then in the kind of low right-hand corner is really battery power. So for us, that's great because something we've never had from a technology perspective is proper cooling, proper battery to keep all of our services up at a, at a high level. So now we have that with this awesome new facility. And I, a lot of words here, I'm not going to really highlight that too much, but really just do some of the highlights. As we really visioned out our technology center, some of our vulnerabilities really were keeping our services up and functional. So power cooling and flexibility in regards to our network infrastructure, we clearly have been able to do that through, through our new data center and it's, it's top-notch. From having a generator power that can keep us up 24/7 as needed, that's going to make sure that we're, we're always up and providing our services to our stakeholders across the community. One of the really cool things about our overall project has been we've also been able to create a disaster recovery site, which we haven't had within Arlington before. And that, actually, that's going to be housed here at the administration building. So for us, if we ever have difficulties or have issues with services, it allows us to maintain our services. They'll automatically fill over here to the site and keep everything up and running. So we really put a lot of time and energy on a master plan design and everything that we're doing between the data center, as well as making sure that we're covered in worst-case situations, whether it's maybe weather-related, maybe, maybe something as simple as a fiber gets cut. You never know what might go down in the city of Arlington. Or a car could hit a pole, you never know. You know, there's so many random things that have actually happened, you just never know. So we try to plan for worst-case scenario and we've been able to do that with this, with the, with the funding and the master planning through the data center. So we're really super excited about that and we hope that it'll provide an even higher level of service than we've been able to provide, provide today. And one other thing to note is I'm really looking forward to, to working, we actually have a meeting set up with Ginger next week, is really kind of really the last bullet. We really want to create pathways, additional pathways for students because we have lots of kids that really want to be involved in technology-related fields. We want to get them involved with our great data center. There's a, it was purposeful on why we wanted to master plan it as a part of the CTC facility. So hopefully we can continue to have those conversations, build those pathways, and get even more students involved in areas that maybe they haven't been able to do before. So I'm really, really excited about what that can mean for us as we, as we move forward. Just a little bit on a couple of different areas, our classroom technology standards, y'all are up to speed on this. We've been doing this for multiple years now. I'm happy to say, you'll notice our teacher standard is complete, so we've, we've been able to distribute that to all of our teaching staff. A lot more too, just distribution of devices. We've done a ton of professional development along the way with our teachers regarding how they can effectively integrate those devices into the learning, their own learning experience, as well as students' learning experiences. And then we've coupled that with our AV standard. You'll notice we've had 49 out of 73 campuses that are complete. I'm pretty confident we'll be able to complete the rest of our campuses over the course of this next school year. So we're ahead of the curve a little bit on what we've been able to do there. And then our student standard, obviously that's a critical piece as well. We need, we need devices in the hands of our students. So I'm happy to say that from our Chromebook phase, if you remember, for grades three through 12 is our Chromebook standard. That has been fully distributed to all of our campuses. We're swinging back to our K through two standard and grade levels and starting to distribute our iPads for more of our touch-type technologies for our younger kiddos. So hopefully those will start to wrap up over the course of this school year as well and we can turn the page and then focus on, on developing skills, proficiencies, and continuing the professional development lens of that. That's what we should be focused on. And we obviously can't give a bunch of stuff without having the infrastructure to support it. So I'm also happy to say that our wireless upgrades across all of our facilities are fully, fully complete and up to date. Now, that's an ongoing, evolving deal, so as, as things change, as different devices come and go, we certainly have to stay on top of that, but we're happy to at least have what we set out to do, complete, and we'll continue to evolve, evolve our backend pieces as we need to, to meet the, the growing needs and demands of our, of our students and our staff. So security, if you remember correctly, we partner tightly with our security office in regards to our security camera initiative across the district. You'll see that we have 48 complete locations. There are two remaining in phase two, four remaining in phase three, and then planning underway for, for phase four and locations. We work hand-in-hand, hand-in-hand with them regarding the data cabling, infrastructure piece of the puzzle to make sure that we are ahead of the game. That way they can come and put the security cameras behind it and make sure that we have those up and functional in place. So that kind of gives you at least a rough idea of where we're at with security cameras. That's ongoing as well as a part of our infrastructure implementation. Any questions about technology?
Well, yeah, we, we can, we can certainly ask questions specific on technology if, if you have those versus other areas. Ms. Solins, your light is on. Defer to others. Okay. So Ms. Mays, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had one question for the security and technology. So 73 of our 73 schools, you said, have received our Chromebooks. That's awesome. And then two of the 73 schools have received iPads. So are we going to have every school for, equipped with both Chromebooks and with iPads?
Elementary schools. So that, so our iPads are geared towards our K through two classrooms. So every single elementary school, if you remember correctly, we have a, a two-to-one standard based upon the number of instruct, number of FTE units at the campus. So for all K through two classrooms, we'll give an allotment to every elementary campus based upon the formula that's customized to the campus and they'll receive that. Now, the principal has the autonomy to distribute those devices how they see fit. Some campuses operate differently than others and they've had the same latitude with Chromebooks as well. But yes, elementary K2 gets iPads, three through six gets Chromebooks, and then of course, grades seven through 12 gets Chromebooks as well.
Okay. So the, the two out of the 73?
Yes, we've just begun the iPad deployment. We kind of did that at the tail, tail end of that school year. It took us pretty much all last year to really start and finish the Chromebook deployment. We also had kind of a bump in the road with, with dealing with pre-K. You'll notice that we've done some iPad deployments with pre-K specifically, so we're just now putting the focus on the rest of the iPads for grades K through two. And I actually, I cannot remember the two campuses that we've completed that at, but, but that, we're pretty much ready to go. We were waiting for the new bond funding to come in place to then be able to process that and get it out to the campus. We work with a third-party vendor to, to be able to get that out pretty quick, so we should be able to do that in the fall for a bulk of the campuses.
And I know you're probably saying this in plain language and maybe it's because I just came off a vacation. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, so 73 of the 73 got the Chromebooks.
All, all campuses got their Chromebook allotment. That's correct. That includes elementaries and all secondary campuses.
Right.
That's correct.
But you were saying iPads was only for?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a typo. Thank you. There's not 73 total campuses. I'm sorry. I just not caught on that myself. You're right.
Okay.
You're right. That number is wrong. I apologize.
Okay.
Total number of elementary campuses, so was it 53? 53 campuses? Yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you. That, that was my only question.
Seven should be a five.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other trustees with technology-specific questions? Okay, I have one for you, two really. As far as the migration of all of the servers, et cetera, have, has that already occurred? As far as that transition or is that still to come? And what does that look like as far as how smooth that will be?
We will go as cautionary as we need to. So for example, our, we've actually brought up the entire network infrastructure over at the new data center. We haven't transitioned any servers, services over to it yet. We have the ability to do that on the fly as we feel it's appropriate. So we, we really don't want to risk anything for the start of the school year. So we're, we want to make sure that we're, our, the foundation is set, so to speak, at the CTC before we do that. We can do that in off-peak hours, on the weekends, and transition over on the fly. That's one of the nice things about the new infrastructure. It's basically virtual and so you really can migrate that in a matter of minutes over to, between site and site.
That's great.
Yeah, we will be, we'll, we, we kind of have a master plan for that, but we're certainly not going to push it. We want to make sure everything's good for the start of the school year and then we'll, we'll do it in the background.
Gotcha. And I'm sure with the master plan is the communication strategy as well as?
Absolutely.
Phase whatever is being rolled out.
For sure.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. The only other question I have is, will, will the moniker Chad's World be on the outside of the building or in your office? Because that's kind of catchy.
We prefer it operating in the background. How's that?
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Transportation is the final area that we'll look at. We have to date spent, we've ordered all the vehicles that we planned to order for phases one through three and we have $718,000 left. We've spent a little over $11.2 million or encumbered those funds to date. In this particular year, this last year of orders, we ordered 20 buses, all of them were propane. We've received 13 of the 20. The other seven are supposed to be here on August 15th. And then of the white fleet vehicles out of the year three funds, we've ordered 23. 22 of those have been received. And so if you heard Chad mention, we have just received the year four dollars, had the, the year four bond sale. And so those proceeds now are available for technology and for fine arts and for transportation. And so typically, transportation will place their orders in the fall and they, they order pretty much all of them at one time or at about the same time. So we will see those orders coming for year four this fall for transportation. So that, that completes our, our update. We'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Tons of information. Ms. Solins, please.
Thank you, President Raish. Ms. Powell, thank you for the presentation. Just, just 100 construction projects at the time?
Just 100.
My goodness.
I think Mr. Horne needs a few more to work on.
Yeah. You know, there's, I think the last time I looked, it was 97 and I kind of had a feeling at that time that the number would go down instead of go up. So kudos to you and while the rest of the, the AID was out, maybe with summer vacation, I have a feeling that yours was cut short. Thank you for your commitment to the district. I do have a couple of questions. On the hub participation chart, you show the amount that has been realized and the amount that's been committed. And understandably, there's a gap because the expenditures have been committed but just haven't come in. But is there a way that you can get a feel for what has been committed and has come in? There's some alignment on what we expected so far? Are we seeing any gaps? Do we have a way to tell?
We, we've been looking at this closely. We have several places where we're having some conversations with contractors because they're, the actual information that they're submitting doesn't exactly align with what they originally committed to. And so some of that may simply be a delay in reporting. Others may be a, a factor that when they went to market for their subs, the ones that had the lowest pricing, that they were able to engage were not hub vendors necessarily. So we're having those conversations as we move further into the bond program and have more data. We are able to assess that a little more closely and, and have those conversations. We have had, to try to promote that even ourselves, we had, just this week, we had a pre-proposal conference for the phase four, or the phase five architect work that is on the street at the moment. We also had a contractor symposium where we tried to get the word out to the community on the projects that'll be on the projects that will be coming up this fall. And when we go out for bid, and when we have these symposiums and these pre-proposal conferences, we send all the information to all the chambers, all the local chambers, the minority chambers, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, what have you. And they're good about sending information on out to their membership. And so we, we are working, trying to, to engage the hub community. And so I, I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job of that. We, we have some opportunities still, I think.
I, I think the, the work has been exceptional. And I think that part of what we may be seeing is it's unusual that the hub participation con, reports back relate to anything more than commitment, that the district has taken the extra step to report expenditures. And that may, that's different than what we see in other areas. And so I think there's a strong commitment by the district. Commend that. That is an unusual and powerful step. So, yeah, I think that together with what you're doing on the follow-up on those questions, reaching out to symposiums and whatnot, where I saw the, I saw a lot in social media myself, you know, on opportunities for people to connect. So I think that, that's really good. So it was, it was great to see and great to see that that, that that's coming forth and it's being reported to the board, going back to the contractors following up. This was your commitment. Where's your, where's your outcome? And again, I, I expect that's kind of unusual. And, but it's, it's important, and I'm, I'm very, very proud that this district has made that step. So I also had a question about the rebid work, recent rebid work. Now, I noticed that you had on, on one of your charts, and I don't remember which one, but at the bottom that talked about some rebid. And could you explain for people that may be watching the importance of that rebid work? That, you know, when we start a bond project, we're starting on a, a lot of estimates and some, some very informed timing and planning. But we still are subject to bidding and then getting the actual cost in. And when things are not what they are, it's, it's the best interest of the district to, you know, time out a minute. And so could you explain some of that?
Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a very good question. So as an example, the board took action here earlier this evening to terminate a particular contract, and we will rebid that. And just as you expressed, and as I spoke of earlier, the intention there is strictly to try to gain some better pricing. We are in a very, very competitive, very active construction market right now. And as we all know, you know, construction is one of these things that cycles up and down, follows very closely the economy. With our two thousand nine bond program, we, we worked through that bond program right after the economic downturn. And so we actually benefited throughout most of that bond program. We had a lot of construction companies that were really hungry for work. And, and, and so we obtained very excellent pricing on almost every job. Right now, the market is so competitive. There's so much work out there, commercial work, both public and private commercial work, that it's very much a contractor's market at the moment. Subcontractors are really stretched to the limits right now. And it's, it's, it's a real challenge for our construction managers and our general contractors to line up subcontractors. And so they are charging, they, the subs even, are charging premiums for their work. And so that means that, that we have to be very, very careful as we go through our planning process and our bid process. And we actually have several packages right now that are, we are rebidding because we think that the initial pricing that we received was, was very, very high. And we think we do have opportunity to lower the, the pricing a bit by going back out to the market. In a couple of cases, and for school districts in particular, the really hot construction season are those three months in the summer, obviously, when most schools have an opportunity to be out or to really significantly curtail their activities in the building. And so that's when a lot of people do their work. Well, if everybody's bidding for work to be done at exactly the same time, then it really does drive pricing up. So in at least the case of two bid packages, we think that that was somewhat working against us. We'd gone out for bid in the later spring months. And so we were competing with all these other firms and districts and that were looking for summer work. We think that if we come back in the fall after that hot summer market, that we would have a better opportunity to catch some contractors coming off of jobs and that are looking for work to fill their next six to eight to nine months. And so we're, we're looking for opportunity there. We're also, when we do that, Mr. Horne and his staff, they go back to the architects. We work very closely on their construction documents to make sure that there's nothing inside those construction documents that perhaps a contractor or a construction manager has difficulty understanding. And that because of that, they're throwing extra dollars into a bid. So we're working on that. And then also at, at the schedule that we publish to contractors for doing work, making sure that, that contractors know that they can be in our buildings, even when they're occupied. They can be in our buildings during the day, rather than telling them, as some will, and as we have on, on occasion, that you can only be there after hours. And so as you can imagine, if you tell a contractor they can only be there after hours, then that drives up their price. So we look for all these opportunities. But we do have three or four packages right now that we are rebidding, and it is strictly in an attempt to, to maximize our value on those projects.
And it's, it's certainly complicated. I can imagine a hundred construction projects. And true kudos to the staff that, because it'd be hard enough to put it all together and say, we're going to go down Project A through whatever and get it done. But then to take a break and take a three sixty look before you go out to make sure that not only you're getting the best price, but also the best product. So that the end of the day, the teachers and the students in the classroom are best served. I know that that is a timely extra step, but an important one. If there, something changes on campus, you know, this bond was, we put together, you know, some years ago, and a campus had, some project now has changed, and now there's a different urgency for something in the work that's left to be done. The principals have opportunity then to, to work with, with, to, to, to change the urgency of something particular. So an air conditioner goes out, or there's a leak in a roof, or, you know, maybe something else.
And, and we do. And that, that's a good question, too. One of the things that we've done across the bond program, we wanted to make sure that the elementary schools had their STEM labs and their strings rooms, especially those STEM labs, as soon as possible. So even those schools that are scheduled to have their deficiency work done in Phase Four, Phase Five, we carved out those STEM labs in the strings room, put them all in one package. And so by the end of this, probably into the spring months of this year, all the STEM labs will be done across the district. We have had some projects where we've accelerated the work because an HVAC system went out and it just did not make any sense to pour more money into the equipment to keep it running for another year or so until it became time for that school's deficiency work. And so we've done some of that. And then even within a project, if we start on a campus, we do work with the principal, and we phase the work. And we phase the work around what makes best sense based on the overall project schedule. If there's a summer period involved at all, or a holiday period, an extended period, we try to plan work to match those blocks of time, so we minimize disruption. And, you know, we look at all the deficiencies that were identified when we were building the bond program to make sure that we have prioritized those within the particular project and, and the phasing being done on a particular project. So yes, we, we do look at that.
And the, the timing of the projects from the beginning, you know, was a, set out as a, a giant to-do list. And it's, it's much more complicated, I know, than that. But the, what informed the work on what project goes where and when was based on engineering studies, architectural studies, and professionals in the field that gave us an idea of which things needed immediate attention and which things, you know, would be in Year Two or what have you. Right?
Exactly. It was prioritized based on, each facility received a score, a facility condition index score as part of the initial engineering work that was done to help build the deficiency list of work that is in the bond program. And so I believe the higher your score is, that means you have a greater need. And so we started with those, and then you begin to sprinkle around some other schools in close proximity so that we can put them into a package. We may have three schools, or two schools, or four schools in a package. And they generally are located, generally, close together so that it, it makes it more attractive for a contractor to bid in terms of managing projects. And so you're right, we started with who had the most need, and then also looked at what made sense in terms of geography. And we tried to also make sure that at all times there was work going on throughout the district, that we didn't just do work all in one area first and then move over to another area.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Ms. Powell.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. First of all, I want to say with the bond project in general, I've been very excited to see that we have used taxpayer dollars the way that we said we were going to use them. An example that you used tonight was the pro, being proactive of what bumps we may get to. For instance, the drive up at Sherrod. Truly appreciate that because at the end of the day, I know all of our wish is is not to do anything that's going to inter, interrupt the teaching that's going on in the classroom. So really appreciate you taking that proactive measure. Got two questions. One for the auditorium at Martin. When did you say that was going to be complete?
That will be roughly March of eighteen, when that work is completely finished in, in the auditorium.
So what are, what are they doing in the interim with all the activities that go on in that auditorium?
They are working with, one of the things, and, and the principals have been really good about this. We've, we've been very careful to make sure we did not take both the Arlington High and the Martin auditoriums offline at the same time because there has already been some conversation between the staffs there about sharing those facilities. And so we've worked very closely with the staff at Martin. They're very familiar with the, the schedule there. And they have made, and are making arrangements for their performances that'll take place this fall and in early winter months, other places. Some of that will involve sharing, even over at the Arlington High facility.
Okay. Very good. We are one big happy family anyway. Okay. And then hub participation. One thing that I kind of wanted to just bring up, I, I know I've talked about this in the past, and I think there's a few things to look at here that I think actually confirm some of the questions that I've been asking. Just looking at the, the projected budget amount and the percentage of commitment. If we look at that, that's about twenty-three percent of total dollars for that commitment. And then if we look at the expenses to date, that's about seventeen percent of those dollars. So not asking for a remedy now, but definitely putting, putting it out there to continue to have discussions about hub participation. You know, to have the opportunity to connect is just a little bit different than actually having the opportunity to really participate. And when we talk about the percentages, even if you think that they look high, then we look at the dollars. I'd really like for, I'd really like to know, is the district's purpose to have a high committed percentage of hub participation versus are we truly trying to get dollars out there to those hub participants? Other questions, the contractors. If they're committing to a certain percentage of hub participation, and based on the rubric that was created, that we asked to have created, and thank you for creating it, but if, based on that rubric, if they commit to a high percentage, but they don't actually utilize that percentage that they said, which was part of their ratings of actually getting the bid, then what does the district do? What's the incentive for companies to not come and say, hey, I'm going to use this percentage of hub participation, but they don't, and they've gotten paid for the job? You know, what do we do? Do we have recourses? Do we need to create policy for recourses? So those are just questions that, while I'm looking at this, that I'm having, that, you know, hopefully we can have that discussion. So once again, I think I just kind of want to talk about the district's real goal when it comes to hub participation. Are we really looking at the percentage? Are we really trying to get dollars out there in our community for some of those hub participants?
So I guess if I could comment a little bit on that?
Absolutely.
You know, one of the things that, that we always try to remind people is that with, with our work, we are bound by state bid laws. And so we try, we, we do a lot of outreach through the minority chambers, and they push information out to their members. We hold these symposiums, and we certainly encourage minority participation. When we do our bids, we, the way the matrix is set up, it gives a construction manager or a general contractor additional points in the scoring process for their commitment. At the end of the day, you know, there may be a, a proposer that may have a higher hub commitment than another contractor. But, you know, price is, is the big factor there. And the, the weighting of the staff and, and the process by which they go at managing work, that's one of the things we score them on, is, is their approach to a project. And so all these things factor together in terms of qualifications and, and experience on, relevant experience on similar other projects. And so we, we cannot bypass a, a contractor that has the best overall score to take one simply because their hub commitment is higher or any other factor in, in their proposal scored higher than another contractor. And that's something that's a little different than what you see in a, a private development where they have more latitude in where they go. And certainly, you know, price is a consideration for everyone. But that is something where we have, we are bound by state law on how we bid projects and so, and award them. And so that's something that it, that, you know, is a challenge. And, and we, we try to do that outreach. We try to encourage contractors. There is not a legal requirement for a hub participation either at the state level. Actually, we are not even permitted legally to do a hub set aside, if you will. And so there's nothing contractual. Back to your question about what kind of recourse. We've set this as something that was important to the board and the district, and we had never tracked it, and never really pushed it and pursued it. And we committed that as a district, we would do that with this bond program to see what was reasonable. And so we spend a, a lot of time gathering that information to even be able to track it and report it. So there's, there's nothing contractual, back to your question. And nor would there ever be a contractual penalty if you don't miss or if you don't hit your commitment. That would be something that we would consider down the road in future bid processes.
Okay. So then, and I appreciate the fact that we put that in place. And I understand there's not an obligation for us to do that. But at the end of the day, we, we talk about taking care of our community and those people in it. So a lot of those businesses are people in our community that are paying their taxes to the district. So we're putting forth a good faith effort. That, that I do appreciate. And I understand about us being contractually bound by the state, but where we're not bound is how we created the rubric, because the district created that. So if there's an opportunity for any latitude, I think it should be within that rubric. An example may be if you are minority, female-owned business, then just as an example, then you should get more points because your commitment may change. You can put out any number. But the fact that you're minority-owned isn't going to change as long as that business is that business. So just the, the latitude that I'm talking about is what we can impact. And we did create that rubric, so we do have some latitude. So just a conversation that maybe we can continue to have. I'm glad that we did it in here, but I'm hoping that, that y'all decided to do this because the board requested it. But, but if there's a way to make it work where it's good for both parties, then we're going to continue to do that in the future. So here's an opportunity to look at how it's been utilized, how good it's done, and if there's anything we can change to make it better, being the rubric, then that's a discussion that I, I hope we have. Thanks.
I don't see any other lights for questions. I do have a, a couple of questions on the, and I guess a, a statement just to dovetail onto what Ms. Mays was just speaking about. With the symposium where different people come out to engage, I'm sure some of those are the, the more overall general contractor level, and others are going to be at the sub-level. And this is certainly not a, not a, a request for you to do it. Just curious if we have any mechanisms in place to put those interested subs in contact with the current? with the current construction folks that we have working on projects in the district to help them connect with those larger companies to maybe be a sub for them? Do we do anything like that?
We haven't done anything specifically like that recently. You know, by the time we execute a contract, especially if it's a competitive seal proposal, usually the contractor has identified who they're going, who their subcontractors are going to be. But that is something that we can look at doing. It may be hosting something specifically for subs and have the construction management or the general contractors there because, you know, a lot of these construction management firms that we use, we will use again down the road likely because they are the companies that do schoolwork and are likely to bid on our projects again. So, we can look at doing that. One of the things also in the rubric that we score the contractors on has to do with their process, how they connect with the subcontractor community to promote hub participation. So, there's actually points within the rubric on that. And there are some of them that have very well-established mentoring programs where they bring small companies, minority companies on and coach them in a business model, how to run their business, how to bid jobs, how to get insurance, this sort of thing. And so, and then there are others that don't have as extensive an outreach kind of program. And so, but that is one of the things that we look at even as we're scoring for the contractors.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. The other questions I have are related to communication. For Martin High School as an example, with the staff fully on board and the communication back and forth with Arlington High and campus leadership really cooperating and working with this, with the end goal in mind, what is happening to prepare those students when they come back in a couple of weeks and their parents and the boosters, et cetera, et cetera? Because I'm sure we'll hear some noise, so.
Well, and Leslie Johnson and her department do a great job with our website in posting information about projects on the bond page. As we start a project, their office puts out a customized letter, drafts it for the principal's signature. That goes out to parents. It goes on the school's website. Principals are really good about posting things online about the progress of their projects, especially if there's going to be a change in the drop-off pattern. Say, we see that more is at elementary schools where there's a singular drive out front and they may have to, you know, do something a little different for drop-off and pickup. Principals are really good about posting that information and Leslie's department helps them if they need help with any of that. Our project managers work with the principals, so they have, they do look, a look ahead throughout the project so that the principals know what's coming generally in the next couple of weeks. We have owner, architect, contractor meetings, usually on a weekly basis onsite. Our project managers will attend those. The principal will either attend those or send an assistant principal to attend those usually. And so, we try to keep them informed about what's going to happen next. And so, the principals are good about communicating that out to their parents. And there have been a couple of cases, Martin's one, where they've relocated their registration out to their multipurpose activity center because the front entrance area, the office area where they would normally do registration, some of that's not quite ready to go yet. And so, they've been posting that information online and sending notices out to their parents, their kids.
No, go ahead.
Martin in particular, I think the fine arts directors, as far as the auditorium usage and all that, have been involved in that discussion as to the plans.
Absolutely.
And they've gotten the notice and they've been, they're part of this whole process. And that's another communication piece with the students in particular that you were asking about and the parents and the boosters.
So, in that particular example, they've had input from the start on the particular work to be done and then when it would be done. And so, then they report that back to the parents and the boosters and the kids and adjust as they need to in the building.
That's great. Yeah, sure. Pardon our mess in our progress at the same time. With the schools that have been affected by the rebidding process, is it a similar type of communication process?
It is. We've met with the principals of those packages that are being rebid right now and given them the new schedules and explained to them that what we're doing and the why. And then that information is also adjusted on the website in terms of scheduling. So, we do, we do attempt to communicate that as well with them.
Okay. Well, as Ms. Sullen said, only over 100 projects. My gosh, that's phenomenal. I remember when we all gasped last year, it was 90 and we're like, my gosh, and now we're at 100. It's phenomenal, the efforts, the coordination, so many different moving parts. And to keep all of our students focused and provide the best learning environment for them while all this is going on is seemingly insurmountable as a task. So, thank you, Ms. Powell, Mr. Horn, your staffs and all of the teachers especially that are on the front lines of working through all of that. So, with hopefully not too much more rain in the next few days, we'll have some of those projects completely checked off the list. I know there's some schools that are a little concerned on parking lots, et cetera. Thank you very much for the update. I think it's music to all of our ears to hear that these things are on time. The career tech center, Ms. Pollster, you walked in perhaps a little late. Ms. Powell did state that all of the heifers are going to be at the CTC with you through October. Just kidding. Very excited to hear that things are moving on target there as far as time and look forward to all of our students benefiting from everything that's going on. Thank you very much. So, with that, I don't see any other, no other questions on our bond? Well, let's move on then. Next, we'll just call this the Ms. Powell Show. Next is our legislative update discussion, which unless you want to turf that off to one of your unsuspecting colleagues.
Yeah, and there any one of them that would love that opportunity. This is, we do want to bring to you an update that will touch on the work that took place in the spring with the regular session and then the special session that is underway at the moment. In our next meeting, we plan right now for our legislative consultant, one of our legislators' consultants to be here to give a more detailed overview of the work that's taking place at the moment. So, in terms of the 85th legislature, they convened into regular session in January and they met for 140 days and they adjourned May 29. And they did not actually accomplish a tremendous amount, as you'll see here in just a minute. There were some unfinished business, some pressure to bring that group back. And so, the governor called the group back, the legislature back, and they convened into a special session that began July 18. By state law, a special session can last up to 30 days. Now, a governor can continue to call special sessions, but by the state law, it can only last 30 days. So, that, the special session, number one, convened July 18. And if it lasts the full 30 days, it will end August 16. So, we are, this board is very well aware of our legislative advocacy. The board adopted a legislative agenda last fall and had three overriding objectives, including local control and relevant instructional programming that continued the intention and the commitment from House Bill 5 from the 83rd legislative session and then providing suitable funding and relief from unfunded mandates. If you look at our legislative agenda, it's divided into four broad categories, including accountability, school finance, school choice, and pre-K. And so, I've got a couple of slides here to wrap up things that occurred, the work that occurred in the regular session. This bar chart shows the last several sessions, the last actually five sessions. And you can see that in the current session, the 85th regular session, there were more bills filed than at any time since the 81st legislative session, yet there were fewer bills actually passed than any of these, in any of the previous four sessions. And there were actually more of those bills that were vetoed by the governor. And so, not as productive in terms of the output, I guess we would say. You can summarize the outcome in terms of education, pretty much on this one slide. They made no increase in funding, no changes to the funding system. There was talk during the regular session about having a commission to look at the school funding system in the interim. That did not pass. There were no changes to the active care program with TRS. That's the health care for active employees. Voucher bills were defeated in the regular session. There were some modifications to the accountability system and we'll touch on those in a little more detail in the next couple of slides. There was a bill that attempted to reduce the amount of testing, or more than one bill actually, that did not gain traction. Nothing passed there. Finally, on a good positive note, individual graduation committees that had been established in the previous legislative session have been extended for two more years. There had been hope that they would be made permanent, but that did not happen, but they have been extended for two more years. In the terms, in terms of accountability and assessment, House Bill 22 passed in the regular session. And as you know, our accountability system was set to change really in this upcoming year and we were going to be rated on five individual and separate domains. And so, with the work that took place at the legislature this spring, House Bill 22 was passed and so, several changes have been made now to that plan. Instead of there being five domains, there will be three. And the three domains are student achievement, school progress, and closing the gap. There's been a lot of discussion in the spring around letter grades and school districts generally don't like letter grades. We don't think that that's an appropriate way to report out accountability, progress and performance of our schools or our district as a whole. The letter grades remain though. The letter grades will be assigned to each of those three domains and then the school or the district will receive an overall rating of the letter grade. One of the things that school districts pressed for in the regular session was that at the very least, let's delay implementation of this system until there was more definition around the criteria, the indicators that would be scored within each of these domains. Ultimately, what passed was a delayed implementation for the campus ratings, but not for district ratings. So, beginning next fall, school districts will receive ratings under this new system. Campuses though, it will be the following year, August of 2019, when they first are rated. Individual campuses will receive a what-if rating, a pro forma kind of rating that will come out in January, so, or by January. In the system that was supposed to be effective starting this next year, community and student engagement ratings and survey results were part of the rating, the accountability system. That is no longer the case. One of the things that has, that has been approved as part of House Bill 22 though, is that the commissioner has broad rulemaking authority to determine what indicators and standards will fall within each of these domains, what will actually be, what will actually make up the scores, the indicators within each of the three domains that will contribute to your score. In terms of the overall rating, again, there are three domains and so, that overall rating for a campus or for the district as a whole will be based on the best letter grade from either the student achievement or the student performance domain, plus then the grade for the closing the gap domain. And it's set forth in statute that closing the gap domain has to make up at least 30% of the total weighting. And so, again, the commissioner has some latitude on setting the rules for this, but it's set in law that the grade for closing the gap has to represent at least 30% of the weighting for that overall rating. Districts are allowed to implement a local accountability system. Ultimately, the commissioner will adopt the rules for that and then the commissioner, TEA, has to approve local plans. Terms of the special session that we're in at the moment, the special session was called by the governor. He set forth an agenda that had 20 items on it. The special session was necessitated most by some sunset legislation that needed to be passed and was not passed in the regular session. There are five state agencies that would cease to operate come September 1 unless their sunset legislation was passed. So, that was the impetus really for the special session. The governor required that action on the sunset legislation take place first before he would open up the call to these other topics. But there are 19 other topics in addition to the sunset legislation that are being considered right now. One thing that's real important to note here is that the comptroller has actually certified the revenue that's available to the legislature to spend in the special session and the comptroller's only certified $42 million. And so, there's very little that they can do really in look to revenue, available revenue sources. Anything that they would do, for the most part, they're going to have to fund out of existing budget dollars or go to the rainy day fund or implement, as you'll see in a minute, an accounting change that frees up dollars from the local budget. One of the things that's been particularly noted is that there's been very little coordination in this special session between the House and the Senate. There wasn't much during the regular session, but what we mean by very little coordination is when a bill passes, say the Senate, and then moves to the House for consideration, there's been very little coordination over who in the House would pick up that bill and carry that Senate bill in the House. Same thing goes the other way as well. And so, moving legislation through both chambers is, it's going to be a challenge for any author, any bill author. It's anticipated that at the end of this special session, there may only be, you know, roughly three or four items that come out of this that pass largely because of that. There are several education-related items on the agenda and you see them listed here. The first item is an increase in the salary, average salary and benefits for Texas teachers and a performance pay system. And then also a commission to study the school funding system. That was something that was debated in the regular session and ultimately did not pass. So, that's back on the special session agenda. Vouchers for special needs students and property tax reforms. Most of the property tax reforms that are being discussed right now affect cities and counties more so than school districts, but there are several things in here in the tax legislation that can impact us. One of the biggest being election dates and such as a tax ratification election would, could, in some of this legislation, could only occur on the November general election dates. In terms of, and we'll look at a couple of those broad topics a little more specifically now. So, in the area of teacher pay and benefits, there are two bills, one on the Senate side, one on the House side that are in play right now. They are very, very different. On the Senate side, Senator Nelson is carrying a bill that really is the lieutenant governor's plan and it would give bonuses to teachers based on longevity. On the House side, the plan being carried there, House Bill 198, is a performance pay plan that is really very similar to what Dallas ISD has in place. So, the thought here, these are the two prominent bills dealing with pay, teacher pay, and they are so vastly different that what we're hearing is it's very unlikely that they would ever reconcile these two into a single bill that both chambers can accept. And so, it's not very likely that this will pass. We go back to the point that there's really no new money available and these things obviously cost money. So, the Senate's bill would actually take money that's already budgeted in the Health and Human Services Department and transfer those dollars to TEA to fund both raises and then also to help, also transfer some of the money to TRS to help reduce the cost of the retiree health plan, not the active care plan, but the retiree health plan. House Bill 198 actually has a cost that's much greater than what the dollars are available and there's no good funding source there for that. In terms of the school finance commission, this may be one that we do see that passes. There are identical bills in the House and the Senate to call for a 13-person commission. There are identical bills in the House and the Senate to call for a 13-person commission to study the school finance system and recommend changes before the next regular legislative session starts. So that would be, that report would be due in December of 2018. So I think there's a pretty good chance that that legislation will actually pass. In the area of vouchers, there are two bills that are identical, again, one on the House side, one on the Senate side, that call for vouchers for special ed students specifically. These are pared-down bills somewhat from some of the voucher plans we saw in the regular session. On the Senate side, Senate Bill 2 has passed, the Senate, and has been sent over to the House. The House version of this is left pending right now in committee, and so they still have a couple of weeks, but the House has been pretty vocal, pretty open in the fact that in general, House members do not support vouchers in any shape, form, or fashion. So we'll see how that progresses. In terms of school finance, there are actually four bills right now, all which will be heard tomorrow in the full House, debated in the House. These have passed out of committee. House Bill 21 is very similar to the House Bill 21 that was filed in the regular session that did not pass ultimately. It actually eliminates some of the lesser, if you will, allotments within the funding formulas, takes those dollars and puts them into the basic allotment. It also creates a new allotment for dyslexia. It's very small dollars, but a little bit of funding there for dyslexia services. It extends career tech weighted funding down to the eighth grade level, which is something that most districts, including Arlington, have advocated for for some time, and it increases the funding weight for bilingual education. And it does provide what's called a hardship grant to assist districts that are getting the hold harmless funds right now, known as ASATAR, additional state aid for tax reduction. There are roughly, I think, 260 districts that still receive some hold harmless money, and that funding is set to expire August 31st, and so there's some funding here that would extend those hold harmless payments for several more years. The way that this particular bill would be funded would be to delay the last payment scheduled to come to school districts in this upcoming biennium. We can get our money from the state on a schedule, and the last payment each year comes in August. And so they've done this before where they delay that last payment to September 1, and so that means it will fall into the following fiscal year budget. It's an accounting gimmick. So they would free up dollars, roughly $1.8 billion in the current budget, that could be used then for other purposes. And so that's what this particular bill would do, delay that state aid payment. House Bill 22 actually extends those hold harmless payments through 2019, and again, those payments are set to expire August 31st, and there you see the 260 districts that currently that would impact. House Bill 23, it actually establishes a new program with only $20 million, and $20 million spread across all the districts across the state is pretty insignificant, but that grant would be specific for funding for innovative programs for students with autism. And then House Bill 30 is really the appropriations bill that would fund House Bill 21. In that particular bill, House Bill 30, they actually go in and it would increase the basic allotment, the very core element of the state funding formulas, and then it takes those dollars that are freed up by delaying that final state aid payment and appropriates or budgets those to cover this and those other changes in the funding formulas. So all four of these will be heard in the House tomorrow. So that's where we are. We have a couple of weeks left in the special session, and we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
I don't see any lights indicating any questions. I do want to let the board know that the Governance Committee chaired by Mr. Hogg and myself and Ms. Hudson, as members, have been active in working with our legislative consultants, staying abreast of the changes that are happening in this short 30-day time period. I believe we're meeting in the morning, maybe?
We are, 9 o'clock.
Okay. We have at least a weekly conference call, and the likelihood of getting much of anything accomplished in this special session, as Ms. Powell has stated, is close to none. And I guess the next thing will be to see if our governor decides to, okay, I'll bring y'all back then. Depends on how much he will continue to listen, in my opinion, to Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick. I hope he is listening. I'd love to speak with him. And just as an FYI, the vouchers was actually put on as an amendment to, I think it was 21, today for discussion tomorrow, but then through some quick action by trustees around the state as well as other folks down at the Capitol, that amendment was pulled. So fortunately, that's not happening. So we'll keep you up to date. Thank you, Ms. Powell, for always your efforts and work in drafting the letters in support and opposition on the different bills, very fluid. We'll just see what happens. I see one light from Ms. Mays. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I was a little late on pushing that button. I don't have a question, I just have a very quick comment. Once again, AISD Finance Department, awesome job. You know, people talk about us spending money, but the times where it really counts, and I think this, you may have talked about this several years ago to one of our committees, but for instance, if they were to hold that allotment, we still have to pay bills. So to have that one, two, three, four months of money in the bank, that's where it really comes into play. So I just want to say, and also for fixing the finance, whatever year that eventually happens, if it ever does, I mean, we really hope it does, but is another reason why it's so important for us to watch our dollars, really vet through any additional dollars that we want to spend, because we just don't know how money's going to flow in the future. Representative Dan Heberty at Texas PTA was talking to us for receiving an award, and he had mentioned that 350 ISDs are at their max MNO. That means if they needed any more money for their next year, they could not go to the public to get it, without through some ratifications. Also stated that 36% of the public funds were paid through legislative. So we are not a for-profit company, so how and when do we find this additional 64% for the funding that we need every day to keep our schools running, pay our teachers, pay our staff? So just very quickly, just want to give a kudos once again to our Finance Department, to AISD for doing such an awesome job with our funds to make sure that our students and teachers get the best that they can get.
And can I add kudos to our Governance Committee for doing the work and working, getting those letters out? Those have been tremendously impactful, I do believe. So thank you guys, too.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Ms. Mays. We are an award-winning district when it comes to financial accountability and process, and I know we're not alone. I will have the prejudice to say we're the best, but it's mind-boggling that that is not considered, I believe, at the state level, that there's always the tenor and tone that it has to be more state control as local control, not true local control, because they can't do it. And if that were the case, I would think there would be so many more cases of financial ineptitude all over the place in so many districts. Take ours specifically, we're winning awards. That should speak for something, I would think. So thank you for all your work, all you and your staff, what you guys continue to do day in and day out. It's very unsettling being at the hands of whatever they decide, which is more on ideology and political agenda, in my personal opinion. I guess with the one item at this point that looks like it's likely to go through on the Finance Committee, that 13-member group, what does that look like?
It's pretty well prescribed in the law. The governor, lieutenant governor, and the presiding officers of both houses, each have the opportunity to appoint several people, and there's a makeup there that they have to adhere to. It does include either, I think each one of them, at least the presiding officers, has to appoint someone who is either a school board member or an administrator. That was something that was not in the original bill that was filed in the regular session that districts pressed for, including us even in some of our communication, that was added in the regular session and is there in this particular bill. So there should be at least a couple of people who sit on current school boards or our school district administrators on that commission.
Okay. And that's all the political will. Well, whatever we can do to put one of us on, or I would recommend you, I think you're, in my opinion, one of the best in the state that understands the process and where the holes in the cogs are, or the brakes in the cog. So whatever we can do to support that, I think we will, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think. All right, well, thank you very much for that, and we will hear from our consultant, I think, scheduled at the next board meeting here for the full board and full report of the sessions. All right, thank you very much. All right, so now we move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Again, I don't see any cards, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to share some information about our district. First, the Arlington ISD Education Foundation made a $255,000 donation to the district in late June to bring their total to over $2 million to AISD over their course of existence. And I just can't say enough about the support, the growth, the intentionality of the Education Foundation. And so I'm just very proud of them, and certainly they're a big support of our school district, our teachers in particular, for their grants that they provide, just outstanding, and I've told them that over and over, and so I think it's worth continuing to mention. Next, the extended-year special education students held their annual Fourth of July parade, June 28th, and so you see a nice picture there. They worked hard to decorate their classrooms, halls, and parade up and down the halls with pride. Several of the staff members and parents showed up to support the students. I just want to congratulate them and thank them for their outstanding spirit. The district, once again, very well represented in the Arlington Fourth of July Parade. There are some pictures there. All of our high schools, marching bands, several board members and others participated, again, representing our school district. Very proud of our fine arts and our dedication to really supporting our community and our events. Last week, our principals, assistant principals, deans, directors, and other administrators participated in our annual Instructional Leadership Academy at our own PDC. It was three days of intense learning. That may not be the best picture to demonstrate intense learning, but they had fun as well, that was the next part of this, in a way to kick off the school year. A lot of information, a lot of processing, but also a lot of time to build each other as a team. And I just want to thank all the people, including our professional development staff, Dr. Wertz and others, who put this event together. It is a major undertaking for three days for our principals and our administrators to really learn and also be inspired to start off another school year. So just very proud of them, very proud of our principals and all our administrators. On Monday and Tuesday of this week, we had our leadership retreat for non-campus administrators. These are district leaders from directors on up, directors, executive directors, area superintendents, myself, et cetera. We went through some very important learning opportunities related to our cultural tenants, that we'll be talking more about that, the culture of our district and how to really make sure that it's a culture that helps us achieve our goals. About the active learning cycle, our theory of action with our district, very thorough and important conversations and discussions. Many of the administrators that participated had a lot of valuable input, and it was just a good opportunity for our central district leadership team to come together and learn together. Finally, I want to make sure that we're all remembered to sign up for our third annual AISD Back to School kickoff, 8:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday, August 12th, at AT&amp;T Stadium. The event keeps growing, and registration to receive backpacks and supplies, et cetera, to volunteers, still open, still accepting donations. A donation of $15 provides one student with a backpack and supplies that he or she needs for the beginning of the school year. And I've said this often, and I'll say it again, that being prepared on the very first day of school is very important, especially for our young students, that they are prepared and feel a sense of readiness when they go the very first day of school. And this opportunity here at the stadium, thanks to the Dallas Cowboys and others, all our volunteers, allows our students who otherwise may not have the supplies to actually have that on the first day of school, and all our community partners, and you see them there on the slide, and many other volunteers that'll be there that Saturday. I thank them because they're a part in this learning environment that exists in our community, and it's just the love that is shown there is just really, really impactful. So on behalf of our students, thank you ahead of time for all those volunteers and all the sponsors, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavasso. So are there any trustees that have a report? Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, as we've been talking about bond update tonight. It is that time again. I know it comes around very quickly, but it's that time again. Tomorrow at our website, applications will be open to submit your name to be a member of the Citizens Bond Oversight. Just very quickly, let me read, because I think it's very important. This committee is established to provide transparency and enhance public confidence in the use of proceeds from the sale of bonds authorized by AISD voters on May 10, 2014. The purpose of the committee is to provide findings and recommendations to the Board of Trustees relating to the expenditure of bond proceeds authorized in the 2014 bond election, the progress of the 2014 bond program, and the ways the district can maximize the potential of the 2014 bond program. How applicable that this is opening up now, as we've talked about all these very important parts, and how important this committee really is. So I am encouraging anyone who's interested to go out to our website starting tomorrow. The applications will be open through September 1st, but do not wait until that date, because something always comes up and you may not make it. So please rush, bombard the website tomorrow, August 4 through September 1st. Please submit your name for an application to serve on this amazing committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Other trustees? Ms. Hollins?
Thank you, President Rice. You know, as we begin the school year, we do so with great excitement for the new beginnings, and I'm always excited that when we start the beginning of the school year, and I'm always amazed as well, as a parent of two children, it's hard for me to imagine, it's hard for me to fathom, how a team can put together and be ready for 63,000 students. That's no small undertaking for these students to come in with their new beginnings for learning and growth, working with their teachers and their administrators, and so just a sense of excitement for the new beginnings. But of course, with new beginnings, they always follow the end of something else. And this evening, I want to let you know that this is a case for my family, that after decades of living in Arlington, our journey is now going to take us to Austin, Texas, where my husband and hero of 34 years' work has now become in the Austin area. So in the coming weeks, I will be stepping down from the Board of Trustees. I'll take with me wonderful memories. This district has captured my heart and my daily interest. I'm completely confident in this district's talent and their commitment to our students, the teachers, the faculty, the administrators, the senior staff, and our superintendent, and most certainly this board. This district is in great hands. I want to thank the community for your care and support of supporting me in three elections and in two school bond elections, which I was certainly very interested. I pray that you have found the work productive and with great outcome, because great outcomes is what we're going for. I have found the work I have found the work compelling and important, and at times frankly tough, but have enjoyed every minute and have been honored to serve you. I intend to stay in the public education advocacy space in some manner, and so you can count with one-hundred percent confidence that I will be in AISD's corner cheering you on forevermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. We knew that was coming, did not want to hear it. We, as a board, will come together and, and look at what we have to do in the coming weeks in a period of transition. So now is not the time to discuss at great length, anyway, your vast contributions. I will just say huge, huge shoes to fill. I'm not going to say anymore right now because I won't keep it together. Thank you for letting us know. I know that was incredibly difficult to put it out there. It makes it real. It's, it's happening. You have done tremendous, tremendous, tremendous work. Thank you for that, and thank you for, in your announcement even, so eloquent and, and so, as always, students first, and keep this district moving. And we definitely will and do our best to honor, honor you and your service in continuing on that legacy, is what we do as a board. So as painful as it is, I'm excited for you and the opportunities that lie ahead, and look forward to seeing what you will, you will be doing, and you will be noticed at a, at a different level. So thank you for everything, and we will, we will discuss what will happen as far as transition and what will happen in truly trying to honor you as you do exit Arlington. Big void in Arlington as a whole, big void in North Arlington, and all of your amazing contacts, friends, relationships that, that you have built and sustained. There's a little piece of Jamie in every one of those people. So what I say to you is you are leaving, but know that you've made a great, great indelible mark on, on many people, and so your legacy will live on in that way at a very bare minimum.
Thank you, President Rice. I assure you it's a tough decision, but I am so confident in this district and its ability to serve students exceptionally well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I don't see any other lights indicating other reports. We will not be going into closed session, so at this time, at nine-thirty-four PM, this meeting's adjourned.